Cease meeting. Time being six thirty P M. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, may I roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon?
Here.
Trustee Daly?
Present.
Trustee Moyer?
Here.
Trustee Teets?
Here.
Trustee Wigan?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mason?
Here.
Mayor Shosse?
Here.
Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? Any conflicts of interest with the agenda this evening? No? Okay, um, I'd like to honor our veterans through proclamation. Uh, we're gonna have trustee Cannon read it, him being a veteran himself. Trustee Cannon?
Whereas throughout American history, generations of patriots have bravely served in our military and sacrificed much to protect our country and and preserve democracy around the world. And whereas more than one hundred and twenty thousand American men and women have been held captive by hostile powers during their military service. And more than eighty-three thousand Americans remain missing from World War Two, the Korean War, the Cold War, the Vietnam War, and the Gulf War. And whereas in nineteen fifty-four, President Dwight D Eisenhower signed the first Veterans Day proclamation, calling on a nation to pay appropriate homage to the veterans of all its wars who have contributed so much to the preservation of this nation. And whereas our nation has fought and continues to fight battles around the world. The words of that first proclamation still ring true. Let us solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly on the seas, in the air, and on foreign shores to preserve our heritage of freedom. And let us re-concentrate ourselves to the task of promoting an enduring peace so that their efforts shall not have been in vain. And whereas we members, we remember with somber and grateful hearts those men and women who have served the United States of America with distinction and valor, as service men and women and offer our sincere prayers for those who continue to defend the principles on which, uh, which our nation was founded. And whereas we are proud to recognize our country's veterans and extended families and extend our appreciation of our citizens to those who wear the uniform of the United States Armed Forces and served and have served on the front lines preserving our freedoms and liberty. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor, Kayla Schalcy, mayor of town of Wellington, Colorado proclaim November eleventh, twenty twenty-four as Veterans Day and encourage all residents and families to observe the sacrifices and contributions of our veterans who fought for peace and defended democracy in our land and abroad. In witness thereof, the mayor has set his hand and caused the seal of the town of Wellington to be affixed to this October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, sir. Uh, are there any veterans in the room that would stand? Like to give you guys, um, a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, I'd like to do that. Um, those veterans of you, would you like to come up and, uh, accept this proclamation? Take a photo and you get to keep it? Okay, now is time for public comment. Uh, members of the public wishing to speak, this is for non-agenda items. You'll be given three minutes to speak and state your name for the record and then fill out the form afterwards. Um, now is your time to speak.
Hi. You gonna be okay? My name is Hannah Supas.
I am Reagan.
Esteemed members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. After attending the Parks and Recreation Pickleball Forum last night, we were referred by Billy Cooksey to speak tonight. We represent a growing community of a hundred and sixty pickleball enthusiasts, united not just by our love for the sport, but by the passionate and supportive network we have built together. Our vision is clear. We want to enhance Wellington's recreational landscape by introducing more pickleball amenities right here in our, here in our town, and we are asking for your help. This is not merely about the game. It's about fostering a community where residents can engage, connect, and thrive without needing to seek alternatives elsewhere. By investing in pickleball courts, we can inspire locals to stay active and attract friends from neighboring areas, which will ultimately benefit our local economy. Increasing participation in pickleball and recreation amenities alike could lead to greater commerce in Wellington, enhancing the vibrant vibrancy of our town and supporting local businesses. While we aspire to see dedicated indoor and outdoor pickleball facilities in the future, we understand budget constraints may limit this vision in the short term. Therefore, we propose a practical and immediate solution. Adding more pickleball court lines to the east side of the courts at Wellington Community Park and dividing court fences for safety of all court users. This small step will allow us to foster and accommodate the growing interest in the sport while keeping the pickleball community engaged in one centralized location. We ask for your consideration of this auction and upcoming budget. By providing these updates, you would be help, helping us nurture a passion that has already begun to unite our community. Thank you for your attention and for your ongoing support and helping us grow our beloved sport right here in Wellington.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, no more further public comment. Okay. Um, next we have a presentation. This will be a presentation on the twenty twenty-five utility rates and fees by Ms. Megan Smith.
Just one second to get connected.
Yeah, by all means.
Good evening. Uh, again, I'm Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works. Thank you, Mayor and Board of Trustees. I am here as Mayor Shosse mentioned to give a presentation on our twenty twenty-five proposed, uh, water and wastewater usage rates and our capital investment fees. I do want to preface this presentation this evening with a result of a lot of material that was included in the PowerPoint, um, in the packet. I don't intend, and by no means you can stop me at any point, but I don't intend to stop on each and every slide where there are tables of data that are generally include as a reference point uh, for the public, for the board. Um, mu- much of that material is a little bit repetitive and I want to get through sort of the meat of the presentation and, and we do have a long evening as well tonight. Get started. So, um, I am going to provide some background material. We'll review what those proposed rates and impact fees look like. I was able to pull together some regional rate and fee comparisons, um, at the request of the board. I do have, um, a little overview of the impacts to utility, the cost impacts to utility customers. And then finally, those water and wastewater fund, uh, financial projections. So in reviewing, uh, the background where how we got where we are today, we did a direction of the board, um, perform a full, uh, comprehensive rate and fee study with Raftellus. Contracted with Raftellus in two thousand and two. Um, they are a local Denver, um, based firm that's pretty, uh, nationally renowned at doing all utility kind of rates and fee studies, not just water utilities, wastewater, but stormwater, electric, and so on. Uh, the primary purpose of that study was to ensure fin- financial sustainability of the funds and to ensure that rates and fees cover costs proportionally across our customer classes, including new growth versus existing, uh, customers. The study did include, uh, five-year financial plan cash analysis and it developed models for both the water and the wastewater fund, which we are still using today. They're very user-friendly and have been incorporated into our annual, um, budget review process and, uh, use in the rate-setting efforts. Um, there was a cost of service analysis that allowed us to allocate those costs, um, for different customer classes proportionally across those customers. We did, um, have a utility rate structure roundtable that was pulled together to, um, provide input on, uh, alternative rate structures and to kind of guide the, uh, the new structures that went into place. That study then developed several designs, several different rates based on the, um, provided guidelines from that rate structure roundtable. Those rates were reviewed and, um, and the, uh, excuse me, the preferred alternatives then selected by that rate study roundtable. The, uh, study also reviewed and updated water and wastewater capital impact fees, ensuring that we have the, that we're capturing the cost to reserve that capacity in our system for future growth. And it did have a final recommendation of five percent rate increases for five years with a four percent impact fee increase over that time. So in review of, as we're, um, Mr. Redavid will be up here soon as we're giving a similar budget presentation, but really what drives a lot of our rate costs or excuse me, our rate increases and needs are some of those, um, operational and maintenance costs. I wanted to highlight what those highest single fund costs are for both the water fund and the wastewater fund. Uh, right up at the top there is the cost for our lease agreement with the North Pooter Irrigation Company and that increase that we've seen that's been so dramatic over the last ten or twelve years with that six hundred and forty percent increase in unit cost just from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-three. We also have a, uh, state revolving fund loan that was secured in twenty nineteen for, to help fund the expansion project at the water treatment facility. Similar, we have a state revolving fund loan that was secured in twenty twenty-two for the expansion project at the wastewater treatment facility or the water reclamation facility, excuse me. I do have some snapshots of our, uh, recent and historical water basin usage rates over that same time. Um, a summary of our wastewater basin usage rates, and then finally our residential water and wastewater capital investment fees, uh, summarized as well. Now moving right into the proposed rate and capital investment fee, um, we are recommending, staff is recommending a five percent increase to both, um, water and wastewater usage rates as well as those capital investment fees. As a quick reminder, we did in twenty twenty-three come to the board initially with a recommended five or for the twenty twenty-four rates with a recommended five percent increase for usage rates. At that time, the board asked us to take a second look at the, at that time proposed four percent increase to capital investment fees. We did go back through, analyze, uh, some construction cost indices to be able to justify that a five percent increase was justifiable at that time. Staff did the same sort of review and, um, for rate and fee increases this year, we are coming to you with a recommendation of a five percent increase for capital investment fees as well. So I do provide, um, the next couple of slides are highlighting the comparison and, and tables of what our existing rates are for twenty twenty-four and what those rates would be um, with that five percent increase for our base rates as well as our tiered usage rates. I have the residential water rates broken out. There is our commercial rates and our potable irrigation rates, um, separately. And then we also have our wastewater basin usage rate and then followed by our capital investment fees, uh, those current per tap fees for both water and wastewater and the proposed twenty twenty-five with that five percent increase. So, um, at the, I did have a similar presentation to the board as a reminder. It was here at a work session last month. Um, I think it was last month. And we, it feels like a long time ago. Um, at that time I did have, I was able to pull together some brief, uh, rate comparisons for some of our regional neighbors. There was a request by the board to bring in some additional comparisons. Um, I am able to do that. I do want to preface this comment though with rate setting is not a, a market-based analysis. Our rates are set, our rates and impact fees are set based on what it costs us to serve, what, uh, the expenses are for our utilities and what, um, and, uh, development costs and the, the burden that that places on, on our existing system and future infrastructure. Uh, but it is good to kind of have an idea of where we fall in the region. So, um, this is a single-family residential water cost comparison for three thousand gallons of usage. We did pick, um, in developing this graph, the three thousand gallons of usage, um, has, is our, for the town of Wellington, our winter quarter average use. Most customers are using, uh, at that about three thousand gallons a month in those winter months as sort of that base usage. As a reminder, that volume is included in the rate structure we have, that volume is included in the base rate charge. So for those folks using three thousand gallons or less per month, they don't see an additional usage rate charge on top of the base rate. Uh, one thing that I noted in, um, in investigating what are some of our regional neighbors are doing, there have been a couple of communities that have taken on very similar rates restructuring, um, matching, um, that, that base rate, um, to include some, a volume of base usage, a base level of consumption. None is one, um, severance and eatin' both were others. I do believe their base rate does include four thousand gallons perhaps in that rate, um, but you can see that we for that base level of usage are, are not the most expensive neighbor currently. Now, that does change, um, as we get into higher usage rates. Part of that is directly tied to the cost of what, that we pay for that water use. Um, to our wholesale, our, our lease provider, that North Pooter Irrigation Company. So you can see for that summertime, more irrigation season usage, fifteen thousand gallons, um, Wellington is at that highest. It does cost more here than it does for our regional partners, regional neighbors. I tried to pull together a similar cost comparison to look at what our non-residential rates look like compared to those, uh, neighbors as well um, for both, uh, water and wastewater. So we are, um, up there kind of at the top again with our commercial customers. So this is for a one-inch tap, which does have a little higher base rate. Again, commercial customers that do not have, um, any water usage that's included in their base rate. So they pay for every thousand gallons that they use, they'll pay that tiered rate, um, based on their usage. I was also able to pull together some wastewater rate comparisons. Um, a lot of our neighbors have undergone rate studies recently and there's a couple more that's happening right now. And we are kind of in the middle of the mix there, coming up towards the top. This is for a single-family cost comparison for three thousand gallons of usage. Again, our, um, how we, for residential, uh, customers, their usage fee on a monthly basis is based on the water usage that they used in the months of January, February, and March. We term that our winter quarter average with the, um, assumption that that is reflective of indoor use only. And so that is, that's the volume of usage that gets reset every April. Um, and that's why folks', um, wastewater bills don't really change from one month to the next throughout, throughout a twelve-month cycle. Now that's not the case for our non-residential customers. Our non-residential customers do pay a variable base rate or excuse me, a variable usage rate every month based on how much water they consumed in that month. Um, that was a transition that was made in twenty twenty-three, uh, with an update to the rate structures that we had in place. That, uh, those residential or commercial customers as their production can vary, um, their services that they provide can vary throughout the sea, throughout the year, not just on such a seasonal basis. So it was decided that that would capture a more accurate depiction of their impact to our wastewater treatment facility and loading. I was also able to pull together some capital investment fee comparisons for similar neighbors in our region. Um, you can see here, there is some spread. Um, we're coming in kind of middle of the road or average, it, it seems, as far as, um, many of our neighbors, not the highest, not the lowest for, uh, and included in this graph. So Wellington is listed there on the far right of the graph, our current, and then our proposed twenty-five with that, twenty twenty-five with that five percent, uh, capital investment fee increase. And this is showing the cost for a three-quarter inch tap, a one-inch tap, and a one and a half inch tap. Um, it's also the same, very similar plot, but on the wastewater impact fee side, there's a much larger spread that I found both in the wastewater rates in our neighbors as well as the wastewater impact fees. And I think that just is indicative of the, um, different place that many of these smaller and growing communities are in their infrastructure development and the projects that they're tackling. So I do have some customer cost impacts, um, for our residential, single-family residential customer, uh, cost comparisons. I was able to include, uh, essentially a full bill. So this is not just water or just wastewater or just water and wastewater. This actually also includes our storm drainage fees of which our residential customers see two of those fees on their, um, invoice every month through their, their utility bill. One is for a storm drainage fee for the town of Wellington and then additional fee for the Box Elder Stormwater Authority. That is a pass-through fee, uh, we collect and pass on to that authority. So these, uh, multiple colors then are indicative of those separate pieces of those, of, of those fees that you see on your utility bill. And you definitely can see that significant increase in the summer, summer months. These are usage, uh, based on the amount of usage from those, uh, previous cost comparisons. So a three thousand gallon bill, uh, assuming is, is indicative of a, a winter month and a fifteen thousand gallon usage in the summer month. And you can clearly see that is that volume of usage that is driving those, that expensive summertime bills that we are all extremely aware of. I was able to pull together, uh, just a cost comparison, a couple of cost comparisons for commercial taps. Um, I did a three-quarter inch tap as well as a, a one or one and a half. Um, just, uh, these cost comparisons do not include, um, stormwater drainage fees in this as those fees vary across all of our commercial entities. Those fees are based on the amount of impervious area. So it's going to have a function of your lot size and building sizes. Um, and that changes for, for different commercial customers. So I've left that out of these cost comparisons. So this is reflective just of water and wastewater base and then the water and wastewater usage fees. Or that, those tiered costs. And there's a one and a half inch tap size comparison with an assumed, uh, sixty-three thousand gallon usage, so a lower end, and then a hundred and sixty-two thousand gallon usage, so a little bit of a higher end user in our commercial industries. And we also have a handful of irrigation-only taps in town. So these are folks that are using potable water for irrigation and that tap is serving only irrigated area. It's not serving a building, um, or combined use. Um, there's not very many of these, but there are a handful and these costs are very high. Um, the usage related to irrigation is happening in the summer months only at that peak demand time when our, our treatment facility is working its, at its hardest. Um, this next summer it will be working less hard as we now have the capacity to, to treat all of that. And finally, I did kind of create just a summary slide where you could compare those cost increases, um, across these different customer classes and examples more down to the penny than the, um, the graph allows you to read. Um, finally, our wastewater and wastewater fund impacts. So, um, there are updated financial projections and I did highlight that term projection as these, as our budget for twenty twenty-five is, is also sort of projection in the beyond twenty twenty-five. Um, you know, the, the board is approving. So both with utility rates, we are asking for approval for twenty twenty-five only. Um, we will have time to come back to the board and review any changes that would need to be done at any point next year. It doesn't have to be at the end of the year. That could come early in the year if anything significant changes in our fund, um, that would warrant coming back for review. So just, uh, some summaries of what you see in these financial projections, uh, in the water fund, there is a six million dollar, um, net sort of, it's a net zero effect to the water fund as a whole. But we do separate out in the water fund across our reserve buckets in that fund that include our capital investment reserve as well as our raw water reserve. So we are looking at a six million dollar fund, uh, intra-fund loan, which is, as, uh, Mr. Rhodes has told us before, is sort of a, a term special for Wellington. As we don't necessarily have to take a loan and track it in this way, as this money is staying within the same fund. But we are ensuring that, that if we are looking to, uh, keep part of our fund whole at the expense of another part of our fund, we want to ensure that it is tracked um, and monitored with a repayment structure in place, um, and monitored in the projections as well, which it does include that ten-year repayment schedule in the, uh, water fund. Um, we have, uh, these projections do include general fund transfers for twenty twenty-four, that maximum general fund transfer that was allowed into both the water and wastewater fund. It also assumes the general fund transfer will happen one more year again in twenty twenty-five, um, at currently the suggestion of the board. Um, we do show that the combined fund balance does exceed our reserve policy for next year. That is the budget that we're looking to, um, adopt this year is just for twenty twenty-five. And again, these rates just apply for twenty twenty-five. But that does show some combined fund deficit spending that begins this year and that, that combined, uh, fund balance does go negative beginning in twenty twenty-six. And the wastewater fund, there's the similar general fund transfers that I spoke of. Uh, we again show the combined fund exceeding reserve policy for this, for twenty twenty-five for the proposed budget year. We do show a couple of years of deficit spending this year through twenty-seven with, um, a, a negative balance that hits in twenty twenty-seven and the combined fund negative balance. Um, of note that there are some differences in these water fund projections than were what were in the, the work session packet, but they're not significant. There's nothing in particular that I want to raise that is dramatically different in this than there was before. Mr. Redavid and I had, um, had been working together to ensure that our, our assumptions and the rate models, um, are being shared well and accurately across with the fund transfer tracking that he's doing for the broader set of funds as well. So there was a little bit of shoring up of some of the, um, um, impact of when some loan proceeds were received, if it was a twenty twenty-three versus twenty-four. Um, that kind of, uh, kind of balancing took place. But you can see here, I do want to highlight, um, in line nine, you'll note that intra-fund loan as a proceed that's received into that, into that combined fund. And then you can note in line fifteen where we are showing that repayment, uh, ten-year repayment schedule. This only shows out five years, but the six hundred thousand dollars per year as a, uh, an additional debt service to, to ensure that we're paying that back. That allows us to track it and be very clear about what that, where that funding came from, what it was for, and then ensure that it goes back where we need it to go. And then in the wastewater combined fund, um, we do see, I just wanted to note down here at the line twenty is that ending balance that we do see a negative balance of just under twenty thousand dollars there in twenty twenty-seven. However, um, that, I don't want to predict the future, but there's, uh, modifications that can be made or adjustments that we hope to be able to make in terms of cost savings related to either operations, capital improvement, cost savings that would, um, I think buoy that twenty thousand dollar negative. And on that note, I do want to talk about some of the potential opportunities or next steps. Um, we are, I do want to highlight the general fund transfers that have taken place to date. So twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four have totaled out of the general fund pushing three million dollars already. And we are asking, um, and so far have embedded in the rate modeling, general fund transfers for twenty twenty-five as well, totaling close to another million. We understand that that is not sustainable. That is why in the rate analysis, we do not have any future general fund transfers coming in at this point. We, we need the water and the wastewater fund to be able to operate without that and the general fund very much needs to not have the burden of that, um, obligation. Um, we are actively pursuing ongoing contract negotiations with North Pooter, uh, that will have a significant impact to our operations and maintenance dollar amount, um, on an annual. There, we do anticipate, it was, we work for it every year, operational and capital project cost savings. And then we are pursuing a, um, to turn around soon after the first of the year as it is included in the C I P to kick off a, a more intensive update to that twenty twenty-two rate study. Um, it was recommended to review those rate studies every three to five years. Uh, the town has had enough change in our capital improvement planning as well as our, um, hopefully we'll have additional changes in some of our operational costs that go along with that, that it would warrant being able to really dive in and do a, a full update, um, and see if we're in, see what kind of position we'll be looking at for the next subsequent three to five years. And that is what I have this evening for my presentation. I'm happy to, I, like I said, I did skip through those slides as there was not a lot of reason to land and to breathe through a table together, but I'm happy to go back and review, um, any questions on any of the slides that you have.
Thank you, trustee Moore.
I think you mentioned infrastructure and development and the projects that are surrounding municipalities aren't tackling at this moment and our comparison and rate structure based on that. Can you elaborate a little bit on that just so we can understand what that means as a community?
Um, I, I don't have a, a line of sight into all the capital improvement plans for all of those. Um, and I do want to highlight that the, um, those rate and fees came from me searching online to their most recent fee schedules. So most of them, there were their twenty twenty-four fee schedules. And there was, um, in some cases, mainly in the commercial wastewater, um, to be specific. Um, uh, there is some room for interpretation in how some of those fee structures are, are set up. Um, so I just want to highlight that I'm, I'm not saying that it's a hundred percent exact, but I do believe that I interpreted it well. Um, I think most of that is that it's, a lot of our surrounding communities are currently undergoing construction projects. I know Johnstown, um, is actually greedily just Is actually Greeley just completed a large wastewater infrastructure project. But I don't know the full status of their. Capital improvement planning, but I'm happy to come back with an update on that.
I'm just interested in how our current situation, our rates are higher possibly, but there's. We're ahead of the game in some respects in terms of our expansion and infrastructure.
I think that that generally speaking, it's it's yes, yes.
Another question that I had was with the irrigation, the potable only irrigation, is that an annual cost or? I mean, that's an annual cost, right? Because I feel like when we were in the water roundtable, we saw. Irrigation bills that were below $5 in a month.
Right. And so the some changes that happened to the irrigation rate structure were that. Formerly it came at an inactive tap status over the winter months. And that's not something that we do now because it does remain as an active top year round. So those. Irrigation only potable irrigation only taps do pay a base fee every month, even through the winter months. And they do have a usage tier. Is that rate structure is based seasonally. So the winter season, if they're using water for for some reason, sometimes. Folks are laying sod later in the year, early in the year and need to irrigate it. Is it a little bit of a lower tier structure? But during those summer months when our. Treatment facility is at its peak demand and the infrastructure in place is being utilized at its peak, those rates get pretty high, pretty quick. For that summer seasonal demand. So what you saw on there, that was one month of usage. At I can't remember the exact volume amount. It was it was a large volume amount as as some of those irrigation only tops are are irrigating large green spaces for HOAs. Or some commercial or multifamily areas as well. Yeah, that's that was one month, an example of one month of usage.
Trusty Tietz.
Yes, I'm looking just mainly for clarification on something. And I know we're talking only about 2024, but I just wanted to understand. The bigger picture of projected numbers for 25 and 26. Page, I want to say it's 38 when I'm looking at. The overall fund balance. And so I'm looking at over under proposed reserve target. And I see in 2026 that we're going to be $2.6 million under what we're legally required to have in that fund. Is that correct?
Yep, that is showing that we would be yeah, $2.68 million below our reserve target. If you look up above it actually, not to add insult to injury, but line 22 is showing our ending balance. That is projecting just in the the operational and capital reserve. Fund a negative 2026 ending balance.
Okay, so is that with or without the estimated 5% that we're doing each year? That's with. Oh, got it. I'm sorry. I apologize. I just was looking for clarification. So looking at that, do we have other than that contract negotiation with MPIC? What else fixes this shortfall?
I would highlight that on line 13 and and this is. I hesitate to go far too far down a rabbit hole, but I will highlight on line 13, our operation and maintenance expense. That you see coming in a 2025 at 5.5 million. 3 million of that is a single line item. So well more than half of our operational expenses for a single line item, which is the North Pooter contract.
Got it. So possibility to bring us in that one line item, possibility to bring us within the required fund balance.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. That was my only question when I was looking at the numbers. That's a lot of negative numbers and it was a bit concerning. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Trusty Wigan.
My question was pretty much the same. Do we have anything else that we're looking at or projecting to help offset the deficit?
We are, you know, that the rate increases is what we're here for. Staff is not interested in, well, that would be a probably a far more in-depth conversation that needed another work session, but to to assess the requirement to bring the fund. To negate any of those negative numbers would require a pretty intensive additional rate review. At this point, the. The linchpin in the entire budget process is is the the one invoice that we have the least control over.
The contract.
The contract.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought.
Trusty Ken.
Thank you for the presentation. We reviewed this with the finance committee yesterday. They had some of the same concerns, you know, going into a negative balance. Started in 2026 in the water fund and 2027 in the wastewater fund. It's. I wish I had a crystal ball to to figure out if North Pooter would even agree to. Settle, you know. We're all hoping that that will happen. We've seen the cost increase exponentially. Over the past 10 years, just in the past three years, it's, you know, it's doubled. So. I'd like to think that there's some light at the end of the tunnel there to this, but that depends on North Pooter agreeing to. You know, and we come to an agreement that could reduce our cost. I hate to say it, but we really can't count on that. You know, we don't know if if they're gonna, they may just say. No, we're happy with the contract we've got. In which case we're going to be in negative numbers. Not just through 2029, but far beyond that as well. Especially until we start, until we pay off those state revolving funds, those loans. I wish there was more that we could do. I'll have more comments in the bright in the budget meeting on this, but but I wish there was more that we could do. I appreciate all the work that everyone's doing to trying to find solutions. Ref tell us is probably aware of all these these commitments. I don't know what the study is going to look like. Between 2022 and 2025, you know, those state revolving funds, how that might affect it. I'd hate to see another. Big jump in water and sewer rates for our our customers, especially since. It's hitting everyone pretty hard right now. At least those who are on potable irrigation systems. And especially hurts our commercial businesses as well. You know, I I kind of tore this thing apart trying to think, okay, what can we do? Where can we shave a few dollars here and there? But. In the water fund, I don't see a lot of, a lot of options out there. We did talk in our finance committee about ways that we can. Hopefully reduce some of the negative impacts to our customers. I reminded the finance committee that the town completed a water efficiency plan in 2018. 2019. And those plans have a list of projects that people can do to reduce their their cost and. And some of those have been, you know, discussed like swapping faucets and toilets and that kind of stuff, but. Most of our newer subdivisions who are on potable irrigation already have water. Sensitive faucets and toilets and so forth. I liked in the. In the town hall we had on the budget last week, the presentation by the public works employee Jesse. About a soak cycle and trustee Wigan, you mentioned that before when we talked about the water. It was fairly dramatic. The savings he had and the amount of water he was using and the condition of his lawn. In two of the hottest summers in our record, in our recent record. I think a public education piece would would go a long way. To getting. Our residents more aware of of how they can maybe go about watering differently. So that they can reduce their cost. I mean, nobody likes paying a $500 water bill. Nobody. But if we can reduce that through just some effective management and I and I do recall that the water efficiency plan. Opened up the possibility for access to CWCB loans. To implement various aspects of the water efficiency plan. And an education piece might be a way of going about doing that. I know that we've had, you know, water audits that we provided to our customers. I think. Personally, we received a water audit as well. But I think there's probably more that can be explored through that to help. It's Band-Aid, but if we can reduce our customers' cost, that also reduces. The town's cost. If we can lower the amount of water usage for that single line item. Because we as a community are actively conserving water and working the best way we can. To to reduce the amount of water that we're actually paying for individually, but collectively as a town. That could probably help this as well. But as far as shuffling projects around and so forth like that, it's that's that's kind of hard to do. Especially if you have, you know, maintenance or construction that has to be completed. And going through the CIP and we'll have that that briefing after this when we have the draft budget. I just think that there's more that we need to be doing. Actively instead of just crossing our fingers and hoping that we can renegotiate the contract. I wouldn't mind hearing about the capacity that staff might have. By investigating the CWCB grant program. These aren't loans or grants. And to do a cost analysis about it, if we get a grant for this, what could be our expected return of? You know, return on our investment in that element. So I would just like to see more work. Maybe internally so that we can, we can help reduce some of that burden. And I'll keep my fingers crossed that that we can come to a successful negotiation with North Pooter. But you know, the variables in the A83 contract are. Driving that cost up, you know, the cost of North Buddha shares is one of those variables. Interest rates are. Another one of those variables and it's the interest rates in the recent two or three years that have just. Been a dramatic change to our our cost. And I can't help but think that an interest rate has nothing to do with their ability to open a gate and deliver water to Reservoir 3. So it's it's unfortunate that we're in this position. And I think we need to do everything we can to to correct this because we cannot continue negative spending and. You know, when you, when you got. An ending balance in 2029 on your water fund of of 3.8 million and 2029 of. One, one million, 1.1 million. That's. How do you pay for that if there's if you've expended all of your your budget? And keep going to the general fund means that the general fund will also start seeing. Big deficits and we've seen the general fund drop in this fund balance in the in recent years as well. It's 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 a course that. Has dire consequences unless we correct it. So I appreciate all the, all the work that you and your team and staff is doing on that, but. I think it's time that we started talking about, okay, how can we, how can we reduce the burden on our on our residents? And how do we reduce the burden on our town and our water and wastewater funds? That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Trust you daily.
This is such a frightening situation and it is super clear in the visuals that were provided. So I I appreciate the way in it was laid out. I do want to highlight and focus on a few things that in that are planned for 2025. That I think are worth hitting on again. And that being between general fund transfers and the inter fund, inter inter loan, inter fund loan, excuse me. We're talking about supplementing the fund balance between water and wastewater by. $7 million in 2025. So I I just want to, that's 7 million with an M, 7 million dollars that we're supplementing those two funds with. In order to assist with and prevent massive, massive. Rate increases that would affect. So much more than what we're seeing and have seen in recent past. So supplementing it, $7 million. I I just want it, I have to note that. And then when I had discussions with utility rates with residents, a lot of times. I can explain some of these these things and as much as it's a horrible situation, people kind of understand the context and what exactly is going on. And maybe how dire the situation is. But the other thing that you'll note is that regardless of. The planned 5%, which was provided as a recommendation from the study. We're still bleeding millions of dollars in our funds. On a yearly basis for many years to come. And so it's hard to say, I can't believe we're paying such high rates. But me in the back of my head is knowing that we're also still maintaining a millions of dollars loss every year for multiple years from here on out. Even based off those increased rates. So what a horrible situation to be in for everyone, right? I just want to acknowledge that first and foremost, because this is. The worst to have to decide for people and their households and their costs. It's just so, it's such a bad situation to be in, but this is where we're at. And knowing that there are multiple paths right now being explored to reduce costs. Makes me feel great, but knowing that we're not relying on those within our estimates and projections. To make sure that we are being conservative and safe also makes me feel good for our responsibility for taking care of our town. The other line item I wanted to acknowledge too was row five and that last visual that we saw. And that you'll see in 2024, I believe that the, you know, the impact fees or permit contributions towards the water fund, for example, is 400 some thousand dollars. Expected, but from year to year going forward, it's going to start exceeding $2 million a year. That's a significant change. That's the revenue that we can expect. Now that our water plants are online and we can return to. Development at a healthy rate that pays for infrastructure. So. Those are the other things when we're talking about how do we increase revenue? How do we reduce this burden? By allowing development to occur and to start accepting, you know, impact fees. Because we can and we can support these builds with water now versus we couldn't before the the water plants. We're also significantly increasing our revenue. Not only are we getting more rate payers for those homes. For businesses, we're also then collecting these impact fees to contribute towards these fund balances as well. So that whole equation, I think, is hard to understand. I'm really glad that all of that data is available. The comparison against the other communities is also so telling. Some of them kind of provide some relief. But other ones are still very concerning about how our rates exceed those of other communities, but those are. Based off of. Summer irrigation. So when you're looking at our essential use, we are in the middle of the pack. But when it comes to those high, high usage of the summer of outdoor irrigation. That's where bills are getting out of control, right? But that's where the cost of delivering that water is also the highest. So I, we need to, as other people have mentioned. Help people to understand that they do have full control over the bill. The presentation I saw from Jesse regarding his experiments in his yard. Went from 15,000 gallons over summer months and two years ago for the what fourth hottest summer. And over 100 years to this year, which was the second hottest summer in over 100 years. And he reduced it from 15,000 gallons usage per month in those summer hot months to 5,000. Which, I mean, sometimes it's just the indoor usage only in some households. So that is amazing. And the some of the things that implemented. Are totally viable for every family. And some of the things I've implemented at my house, like keeping my yard long. Letting it be cool itself. So there are ways in education, as we mentioned, that we can help people to help themselves in those summer months. But at the same time, we are in a. Um, but at the same time, we are in a dire situation where we have to charge the cost, the cost to deliver water, so. Again, what a difficult situation. I want to highlight those revenue pieces um in supplementing those funds. And just, of course, send out my uh regrets and care for everyone as they're going through these difficult times with. Affordability of all things, not just water. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Remember Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Ms. Smith, for the presentation. I, uh, ob- obviously, this is a very dire situation and I certainly appreciate all the comments that the, our fellow trustees have had tonight. Um, you know, aside from property taxes, water rates are, are certainly the most impactful thing that our residency put for, before them. Unfortunately, all, all of us are able to see the numbers here and. There is no doubt in my mind that we need to continue to follow what the rate study has shown us because if we don't continue to do that and we decide not to increase rates. This problem's only gonna make itself much worse. So I, I do have to agree with the five percent increase this year. I really appreciate staff for going back and taking the uh, uh, from four percent to five percent for the capital invest, uh, capital investment fees. Uh, obviously, construction needs to pay its own way in that regard. We've said that many times. So it is important that we keep that in line with uh what residents are seeing as far as the increase goes. Uh, obviously, I continue to have hope that the NPIC contract is gonna come back. Hopefully, we see some results on that, but again, that's not a silver bullet as trustee Cannon. Uh, pointed out, so um, assuming the contract does come back to us and we are able to do a rate study in quarter one, quarter two, this board will do whatever it takes to get that done. I have full confidence that we will, we will do that when the time comes. Uh, but again, we, I, I think it's pretty clear that our hands are somewhat tied here in terms of what we, what we can or can't do for rates at this. Singular moment in time, so that's my comment.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for putting this together. Um, very, very clear to see everything. You know, we knew when we did the rate structure, everything that we would be doing these increases, that the fund balances would go negative. Would eventually pull out of being negative as we continued properly. It doesn't look great. Um, it's not, but there's hope and. We're working on every possible solution to get there. So that's all, that's all I have to say at this point. You guys covered most everything before. I don't need to repeat it. Um, okay, now it's time for public comment. Anybody in public want to comment on this presentation? No public comment. Thank you. Uh, next we will have the presentation on the draft budget and CIP from Mr. Nick Redavid.
Perfect. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees and residents of Wellington. I'm Nick Reedavid, Finance Director and Town Treasurer. Uh, tonight, staff is proud to present an updated draft of our fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget and the first draft of our full budget book that was included in the packet. I want to thank everyone at this meeting and joining virtually for your engagement and collaboration in this budget process. Input from the public and guidance from the board is critical in creating the budget for this town. The budget and budget book is the story of how we carry out our mission. Uh, providing outstanding municipal services for our community of today and tomorrow. Uh, tonight's presentation will cover several areas, starting with a recap of the budget calendar. I'll review updates since we last met. I've called out some headlines on the overall budget and then we'll jump into the fund balance and each of the six funds. Lastly, we'll review our capital improvement projects and then we'll all open it up for questions and do my best to answer or follow up in a timely manner. And then we'll open it for public comment. So the twenty twenty-five budget season kicked off in July. Uh, with the finance and finance department and administration leadership developing the twenty twenty-five budget calendar. Department leadership began estimating end of year expenses and compiling projections for twenty twenty-five. The town administrator met with each department leader in August to ensure requested budgets fall within board guidance and the proposed strategic plan. Department leadership and staff spent several weeks refining numbers and draft revenue expenses were provided to the board on October fourth. Ahead of the required, the requirements outlined in municipal code and state statutes. Uh, draft fund balances were published October ninth and board and department leadership met on October eleventh for a budget workshop that was open to the public to observe. We've had over ninety visitors at the Budget Boonanza on October fifteenth. And tonight's presentation with public and after tonight's presentation with public comment, updates will be provided again on November second. Then the finance committee will review the budget on November eighteenth. We anticipate bringing the budget for consideration of adoption on November nineteenth. At the October eleventh budget workshop, several requests from the board have been updated in the draft presented tonight. The updates are that we reduced legislative community events by ten thousand dollars. This retained approximately thirty-three hundred for band and other entertainment options. Uh, Laramore County Sheriff's Office provided a updated uh budget for twenty twenty-five. Including a new community impact deputy that will start on July first. Uh, so those expenses, the ongoing expenses will be fifty percent in twenty twenty-five. One-time expenses uh were determined to be seventy thousand dollars for a new vehicle. And nineteen thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars for equipment and clothing. Uh, the vehicle expense will be spread out over at least two years and that'll begin in twenty twenty-six. All other expenses will be prorated based on the start date. So that reduced the budget request that we were presented of two point four to two point two five million, approximate savings of a hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, at the workshop, uh, merit and COLA increase to wages was recommended. At five percent and there was board discussion of increasing the pool to six percent. Based on the results of the compensation study, Town of Wellington employees are being paid fairly and equitably. Uh, the town provides great benefits, which is another bonus, so we are continuing to recommend a five percent merit and COLA increase. Uh, there were a number of additional adjustments by staff to the budget from the October eleventh meeting. Many of them were discussed at that meeting, just not included in the draft at that time. Uh, we did increase the insurance and bonds by thirty-eight hundred for flood insurance at the Leaper Center and the public official bond. Uh, there was a correction to the park fund overhead transfer, reducing the overhead transfer by four hundred thousand. The updated uh park fund CIP, CIP was uh reduced by a hundred and thirty thousand for twenty twenty-five. Based on anticipated project completion dates before the twenty twenty-four year end. And the corrected, we corrected the reserve requirement line that you'll see here in a moment. Uh, the formula was not calculating the reserve using operating expenditures, so that was updated. The impact to the general fund and park fund was a higher reserve balance required. Uh, and the impact to the street water sewer and drainage fund was a lower reserve balance required. Uh, now it does not take into consideration another part of the um. Uh, enterprise funds that I'll explain here in just a moment, uh, which is the one-year depreciation expense by twenty twenty-seven. So just wanted to go into some quick headlines for the budget. Uh, headlines for twenty twenty-five. Budget are that we are projecting increased revenues, decreased expenses, although there are some significant changes. And a reduced fund balance at year end that will be explained in the following slides. Uh, keep in mind during the twenty twenty-four budget process, the board at the time approved spending down the fund balance by twenty-two and a half million. Uh, and projected an ending twenty twenty-four fund balance of twenty point six million. Current estimates are that we will end twenty twenty-four with a fund balance of twenty-nine point one million. Uh, the conservative budgeting approach of underestimating revenue and overestimating expenses ensures that we are adequately prepared for the year. The town continually explores opportunities for grants to reduce costs and other alternatives to stewards of the community's resources. One headline not listed on, on the slide that I did want to share was that I had a call with our auditor yesterday, Hinkle and Company. And they are anticipating completion of our twenty twenty-two audit in the coming weeks. We have tentatively scheduled an audit presentation in December and we'll be jumping right into the twenty twenty-three audit. This will also set us up to be on time for the twenty twenty-four audit. So the twenty twenty-five estimated fund balance provides an overview of all funds, reserve projections, budgeted expenditures, capital improvement projects. And the impact on the fund balance at year end. Highlighted at the bottom is the reserve requirement, uh, as outlined in the fund balance policy. All funds are anticipated to meet the reserve requirement in twenty twenty-five. As seen in the utility rate presentation, enterprise funds do have an additional depreciation expense component that goes into. Effect per the fund balance policy in twenty twenty-seven that is not included here, but has been taken into consideration. In the uh utility rates, which is why you may notice a difference in the reserve requirement from the previous presentation. I'll also note that there is a difference in the revenue. Excuse me. Uh, on the water fund, but I, I'll note that in a later slide. Uh, in the general fund, which covers administration and operations of the town. Uh, we do anticipate an increase in property taxes and have conservatively budgeted a lower sales tax revenue. Uh, these represent our two largest revenue sources. Uh, the single largest expense is our contract with Laramore County Sheriff's Office. Future years, on, on that contract, we budgeted fifty percent next year for the salary and uh, ongoing expenses. Future years will have that one hundred percent, so we do anticipate that, or that number will go up. Another way to look at those expenditures I've outlined is just a bar chart here showing each department in the general fund and the uh expense. And this is the year-over-year change, so while it does look dramatic, the scale is uh. On the bottom to show that, yes, there is increase, um, but it is. Oh, mo- most of it is relative actually to increase in benefits um with our um employee benefits, excuse me. All right, so in, in the street fund, uh, we do have our, our revenues and expenditures listed there. Outside of wages and benefits, our most expensive expense is the uh electricity for our streetlights. Uh, now the street fund does have our largest capital budget for twenty twenty-five, uh, which is the Cleveland Avenue project. Um, there is also funds in the drainage fund for that as well. The water fund does show um your revenue in. Uh, of the ten million, this does include our raw water and tap fees. Uh, the previous presentation did not include the raw water, so that's why the, the numbers are different, but that is included in the fund balance. So that has been included here. Um, it, again, the transfer in from the general fund is included. And of note, uh, as Deputy Director Smith pointed out, the number one expense is our North Pooter irrigation. Lease, excuse me, um, the debt service is then our, our next highest expense. Uh, this breaks out the fund balance in the uh water fund, just showing where we start at the beginning of the year. The impact on the, where the revenue comes in. The expenditures, including the six hundred thousand dollar intrafund loan payment. Uh, and I, under the raw water, you'll see a two point five million in um capital projects. That two point five million is for raw water purchases should they become available. And it is included in the overall four point one million in the fund balance expenditures for the capital projects. That is something that is budgeted ongoing and um is only spent if it, if an opportunity becomes available. The sewer fund. Excuse me, the, the sewer fund, again, our, our largest expense there is gonna be the um debt service. And you just heard about the, the revenue. Drainage fund, uh, drainage fund is, has the pass-through from the storm wa- stormwater authority fee, so the revenue that's received. Is also the expense goes back out. Uh, that is a, stormwater authority is external. Uh, and then the capital budget here also supports the Cleveland Avenue improvements with the street fund. The park fund, uh, the park fund shows our park and recreation. The. One thing of note here is that the debt service for the Wellington Community Park will be fully satisfied in December twenty twenty-five. So the, uh, that loan will be paid off. And then in the capital improvement projects, this is an overview of some of the larger ones. You'll see the, the street is the largest portion this year. That is four million, uh, including sidewalks and in the street fund, drainage fund has a million. This does not include all the grant revenue for that because of the way that the um project works and the grants are, uh, how those are funded. Um, we don't include grant revenues that we won't receive in the year, so. Uh, the water purchase again is if the opportunity becomes available. In the water fund, we do have another large uh CIP project of the automated metering infrastructure. Uh, and doing that fully next year, uh, and then. The Parks Master Plan and Community Center, the usability study. So the budget book that was included in the packet goes into detail of all of the CIP items, uh, again, that we discussed on the uh October eleventh workshop. There's a description included for each of those, uh, how they tie back to the strategic plan and more details in the budget book. So at this point, I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, sir. Trusty Teets.
Thank you for this presentation. I absolutely love and think you're doing a fantastic job in the position that you are serving in. Considering you're new and your grasp and understanding of our financials is in depth and I truly feel it was your involvement. On our finance committee beforehand that really prepared you for this position moving forward. So I am grateful that we have you with the Town of Wellington. Um, I do have one thing to point out and then a few questions. Um, you were talking about the sewer and water fund and that's, I think I had sent an email, so thank you for kind of touching on the. Um, not separating out, so we had had in the previous presentation, it said that we saw. The tap fees increasing to help offset some of the costs to water costs for future when you plan up to twenty twenty-nine in that presentation and. The only thing that is not laid out in that presentation is that one line item includes. The impact and raw water in that line item, so it is not as awesome as it was viewed previously. Um, there's not a lot of money and it's not a great increase like it was reported, we've seen. Um, I don't know if that's something for the future. We can look at separating those out, so it gives better understanding of where we are actually sitting and what we're collecting in tap fees compared to the raw water. Since they're combined in one line item, that would be fantastic. In general, I'd mainly am addressing concerns that were emailed to me related to. How full of debt our, our budget is. And there is so many line items in this budget that go negative completely. Um, and we're not talking like negative five thousand, a hundred thousand, we're talking negative millions in some cases. And while I support a generalized idea of how this budget is laid out, I think it is extremely important. That we understand and support that the difference of two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for adding additional LCSO officer that has been requested for three years. To our community is huge and I am extremely excited to see this new officer. And I am extremely excited to see this new officer coming on because it will directly impact the cost of parks repairs in itself. And the engagement from our LC SO officers with the youth in the community where we see some expensive destruction happening. So I'm excited to see that and hoping that that offsets some of the costs of bringing on the additional officer. But really, truly, I feel that 1.6 million dollars deficit in our budget is big. And I'm really worried that 1.6 million dollar deficit in a general fund that if something, an emergency were to come up or something were to happen, there's 6 million remaining in our fund balance. That's scary. Like, that's not even a water bill cost for a year. So when you look at it, that is detrimental. What I would like to know and something to look at is we don't have anything increasing funds coming back into our community. So while we are doing these expenditures and we are paying out all of this income to these different sources. We have no, and yes, I'm going to say it, economic development, bringing funds back into our community to help offset these costs. We've lost businesses, multiple businesses this year. And I would love to see, and I will be a dead horse as long as I have to. We really, truly need to look at what those funds look like. And we have to have additional income coming in to help cover these costs in the next five years, or it will be bankrupt. That that's the reality that we're looking at. And I mean, that's our fund balance will be bankrupt. It's not the general fund will be bankrupt, that's what we could use to borrow against will be bankrupt. And that's concerning to me. So I think that there's a few line items that should be addressed and looked at, and we should focus on a balanced budget as much as we need to. And if that's having to sacrifice additional things right now in the budget to move more towards a balanced budget. I think that's really, truly what we should be looking at. That's pretty much my feedback on this right now.
Thank you. Trusty Moore?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Nick, or or I'm sorry, Mr. Redavid, for your presentation. I do have quite a few things to say about this and in general, I just I too saw the email and I saw the spreadsheet. I'm sorry, spreadsheet apologies that was making its rounds online. And I just want to say that we have to be very careful of where we get our information and whether or not we're putting misinformation out online. The spreadsheet had inaccurate revenue in the water and sewer fund, no debt service in the street fund. Debt service in the water fund and in the sewer fund were wrong, ending fund balances were all wrong. And many other errors. So I just would like to caution the community as to where you're getting your information and encourage people to have some trust. I believe in public comment, we heard we are the trustees, we need to be trusted, have some trust in us, have some trust in the staff. They are the ones with the education and the expertise to take these numbers and this predicament that we find ourselves in and project out five years. A resident without that expertise is not someone I would think could possibly do that in a really efficient way. So that's where I'll start. I would also like to say that I think it is unfortunate where we are, but we're in a position right now where we're planning for the future. So yes, our water rates are awful. No one wants to be in this position, no one wants to increase them. But we are also ahead of the game in that we're planning our infrastructure to be able to grow with our community in a way that we need right now to avoid this type of situation in the future. And so I just really want to emphasize that and the responsible planning and growth that our staff has laid out for us in a blueprint that will carry us into the future. And that's what we're planning for now, the future, which is something I don't think happened in the past, which is why we find ourselves here now. Also, I want to reiterate that underestimating revenue and overestimating expenses is wise and conservative. And I spent my afternoon and evening before this meeting going through five years worth of expenditures and revenues for our general fund. And I can tell you, the overestimation of expenses far outweighs the overages and expenses. If I could have a little more time with my spreadsheet, I could tell you that we have saved way more money than we've overspent. And that's a fact. So I just really want to reiterate again, and I'll be quiet, that our staff is doing an excellent job in a really unfortunate situation. And they are all doing a fantastic, really hard thing every single day, and they're the closest ones to it. So I trust you and I trust our other administrative staff and planning and public works that what they suggest is what's best for this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Trusty Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Redavid. I want to echo trustee Moyer's comments. I have tremendous respect for you and for staff. I know the the quality of the professional staff that we have here in Wellington. And I think you're all doing an outstanding job. I do appreciate your comments. And of course, Administrator Garcia also mentioned about the merit increase and COLA increase. Specifically requesting that we reduce that down to 5%. I think that's fair and I appreciate those efforts to do that. That helps a little bit. But I have to point out that that we're getting more upside down every year. And right now, I don't see a clear path to recovery. And and just meeting reserve targets is important, but it's it's not enough. And my concerns are that that when I look through a budget, you know, your typical operations, your personnel cost, your your regular day to day operations and maintenance and so forth like that. Those those costs are kind of fixed. You know, you've got years of precedent telling you how much it costs to repair the streets or how much it costs to to treat the water in our water fund or how much it it costs to run a program at the parks or in recreation. The only variables that that typically you have is these big capital projects. And I'd like to talk a little bit about those, but I've got a couple of questions. I want to intersperse some of my comments with questions as well, so I understand this so well as well. You know, when I was looking through this, trying to figure out, okay, how is there anything that could be done to to shave some cost off to, you know, stop the bleeding, so to speak, especially from our general fund? Because I'm really concerned about the general fund, which is going to dip 1.6 million. Expenditures over revenues this year. Yes, we've still got a ending fund balance of over 6 million dollars, but if we carry this out for a couple of years, that goes away real quick. It goes away in about four years. There are a couple of things that I looked at, and I'm almost hesitant to say this, I mean, in light of, you know, you know, some of the discussions that's gone on, but I looked at some of these these capital expenditures to try to determine, is there a way that we can, you know, bring this a little bit more in line? And I only came up with about 450, 475,000 dollars worth of savings on that. But that requires delaying certain projects, especially during 2025. And I know some projects have been delayed. I did have a great meeting with Inter Lieutenant Jerry about the the new Ellis Laramo County Sheriff's Deputy that came in. But I'm going to recommend we delay that another year. That's 270,000 dollars that we can save to our budget. I also would request that we delay the Public Works Administration Building, which looked through last year's budget was not in the capital improvement plan. So this is something that just kind of popped up. And I know there's a need for it, and I know that that and I've known for a fact that that boy old Boys and Girls Club is is a very inadequate facility. Although I applaud our public work staff for doing what they can to to make that a viable office space. But that's that's 120,000 dollars just in 2025 plus an additional 780 in 2026. The elevator and the municipal services building, 85,000 dollars. The striping equipment, 60,000 dollars. You know, when you start adding those together, that that reduces the amount of expenditures we're doing predominantly out of the the general fund. But like I said, almost half a million dollars. It doesn't it doesn't meet the gap that we see in 2025 in our general fund. But I think it prolongs the agony, I hate to say use that word, because I know that working in the public works building in the old Boys and Girls Club is agonizing because they're so cramped in there. And all of these things are identified by our staff who says, we need this or we want this. And there was a list of priorities in in your budget that talked about, you know, what do we have to do? You know, those those legal obligations we've got, those those contractual obligations, you know? And then you start to get into this is essential for us, this is this is needed for us, this is, you know, be nice to have kind of approach to that. And I believe that all of these projects that are listed are things that the town needs, but I'm not sure they need them in 2025. Especially in light of where our budget is, in light of the direction that this is going. Because we continue to take money out of the general fund to shore up our water and sewer fund. That's not sustainable. And I think we just need to reevaluate some of those some of those capital projects and talk about that. We've got four weeks essentially until your proposed budget approval on the on November 17th, I believe it was. I think we need to have a little bit more discussion about, you know, is this the best that we can do? Is there ways that we can we can tweak this a little bit? I know I know there's been some discussion about, you know, how do we raise revenues and so forth? And I appreciate the comments you had about economic development because you know, economic development is a long term solution to bring in revenues for the town. And that works better than increasing taxes on property or sales or so forth like that. Which which has a low percentage of ever passing. But bringing in more business and more opportunities benefits everybody in the community. You know, and I agree, we've had businesses close and I know Papa's Table is for sale too, you know? So we could be looking at more businesses closing in town. And we need to be doing everything we can to shore up our existing businesses, strengthen supporting them. But we also need to position the town so that we can recruit new commercial businesses. It gives us sales tax, it gives us commercial property taxes, it gives jobs to to town employees. And those jobs pay a salary which is spent within the community, which helps generate additional. It it it's a trickle up effect and not a trickle down effect. But by adding that adding that that a larger commercial base, I think would would help us tremendously in the long run. And commercial growth has a tendency to grow on itself so that it it builds new businesses around to support industries and so forth. I would like to see efforts in economic development. I'm not saying add money to the economic development budget. But I do think that we need to have some serious discussions, and I mentioned this before, about about positioning the town so that we can take advantage of of opportunities that come up. Home rule is one of those that I that I've that I've brought up, and I think that's a good driver. We haven't talked about Cleveland Avenue. And but I think we need to have a discussion on possibly bringing in either a DDA, a Business Improvement District to offset some of these costs. An Urban Renewal Authority that helps us be more nimble to to offer those incentives to recruit the new businesses, especially larger markets like a Safeway or a lumber store or something like that, which we know there's a need for based on that 2018, 2019 Buxman study we did. I know that in my and I get down to my question, so I'm sorry, I'm going to talk a little while on this. But I I think this is this is an important time for us to to really just air this budget out. And again, I appreciate everything that everyone's done to put this together, and I'm thankful you're on the staff there. But again, I didn't see the Public Administration Building on the CIP in the past, so I'm not sure that's ever been recognized as as a as a need for the town. So I'm just kind of surprised that it just it's coming up this year. Has it been on the CIP before? Do we know?
I might have to double check the previous.
We had, we put something in there, like it said Town Hall last year, I believe it was, which is also, I mean, just different naming conventions.
Yeah, I saw that there, okay. And I know how great striping equipment can be, but you know, we've we've survived without it for some time, we might can survive another year. I guess I really don't have any questions other than that one there. But but I do think that that we need to be spending the next next four weeks, you know, doing a little bit another another dive on this to see what we can do. Because to me, it doesn't seem responsible if we're increasing water rates 5% and 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 putting this out there, but we're spending money on a on a on a building. You know, that that may not be critical at at this point in time. So I'd like to have some discussions around that to see if there's if there's ways that we can make this budget a little bit more, a little less dire. I'll put it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Trusty Daly?
Oh.
Hey.
Trusty Wigan?
Oh.
Trusty Wigan, I'm sorry.
First off, I want to thank you for what you put together here. A lot of work, a lot of input from a lot of different people. I definitely agree with what has been said. You know, there's a lot of difference between wants and needs. You know, we definitely need to look at what we actually need here, not necessarily just what we want. We've got to be as frugal as we can. I mean, depending upon how things go here before long. Interest rates can go high, interest rates can go low. I mean, so many factors out there, so we have to be a little bit nimble, I I believe. I know we got the sheriff, the the half the half year sheriff coming on. And I know that's in July and, you know, we do have the flexibility where if our budget isn't to where we need to have it at that point, we can squash that for another year if we need to. Not that we should, not that we want to, but you know, we have to be frugal again. Quick question, on the water lease, you said it was like 2.9 million, is that interest based?
I would defer to Deputy Director Smith.
So that, thank you for the opportunity. And that number reflects assumed volume usage for 2025, assumed share pricing for 2025, assumed share assessment for 2025 and assumed interest rates in 2025. So yeah, there's there's a significant amount of
Okay, so depending upon what the economy does, it could possibly go up, but hopefully it's going to be going down, so.
All signs point to down at this point.
Oh, perfect.
But see what the Fed does.
Amen, amen. You know, one thing that we definitely need to do here, I mean, we are a growing town. We need to invest in the future. And, you know, like the I-25 overpass, you know, we're talking about economic development and, you know, all the good that can come from that. But if we don't have the I-25 overpass redone, it's going to be hard to attract good businesses. We definitely need to do some economic development. I mean, that I mean, that is so critical. I mean, that's the more businesses you have here, the more taxes you're going to have, the more people you're going to have coming into the town. I mean, it just it's a win win situation, and I think that's one thing that we should be looking at. If we need to cut someplace else, okay, but we definitely should be getting an economic development person in here. We got to draw people in. You know, again, we need to be planning for the future, whether it's water, whether it's the overpass, whether it's the other amenities for the community. We got to make this an attractive place for people to want to come to, want to live. Pickleball, I mean, they were talking about that today, you know, different things in the park, whatever. That's all amenities that we need to be planning for, and I think we're doing a pretty decent job. You know, thank God we got Billy in there and he's been a great asset to this town. But again, I think what we have to do, we got to, you know, weigh out needs and wants. You know, I want to have a Corvette. I drive a Nissan Rogue. I mean, there's needs and there's wants. We have to live within our means and we have to be practical at times. So, you know, this is a tough time with water and everything else that we're going through. We're looking at, you know, different major possible construction of whether it's a municipal building or some of the other stuff. But we have to look at how that appears to the community too. So we have to be a little bit conscious of that and be good stewards of the money here too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Daley.
Hey, so as introduction to my comments, since we've had many opportunities already, right, to review the budget. So a lot of my major questions occurred during our retreat that we did or workshop, excuse me, where we grilled staff on every single line item of every single fund, whether it be CIP or operational or what. So I want to make sure that everybody watching or here present in the meeting is aware of the depth in which we've already considered this and we provide a feedback and we ask a lot of questions. So if you're not hearing maybe the engagement that you're expecting, it's likely because we've done many portions of that in separate session, whether it be the Bonanza that was a community event or or those other sessions and readings that we've seen of this. And that's why we welcome the input that we're hearing from you today to add to that the information that we have and what we can provide as feedback. So thank you guys for attending and caring. Also, on that note, the the packet tonight is hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages. I'm not exaggerating. So I urge anyone who would like to provide feedback on the budget. You have all the information in front of you for the actual costs, revenue, expectations, everything like that. I have been incredibly aware and concerned about some of the conversations happening in the public and public forums that are blatantly incorrect. I want to believe it's out of confusion. I worry that it's willfully done. It may be intentional to cause chaos. So I urge everyone here, if you have informations on the budget, you have amazing resources in front of you that have real knowledge, real numbers, real insight, and would love to hear from you and talk with you. The forums in which I see this information, you know, I see concerning things. But if I were to comment, it would be this weird attack thing based off of no truths. So I really worry about that. So what I'm urging everyone here to do is to talk to me, to talk to people directly, to ask great questions and get real information and and then provide feedback on the truths. So I want everyone to do that. So a lot of the comments I heard tonight are really concerning to me because we just went through this whole situation where we neglected to as an entire town and community to and we have just solved this. So this is why I don't want to make this mistake right now. We didn't have the infrastructure to support the community that we have reliably for water and wastewater. And we neglected to plan for it for decades before now. And because of that, we had to put things on hold that would help our town be better and whole. We just talked about how we weren't able to collect impact fees for years and years and years because we wouldn't, we couldn't support anything for growing because of our restrictions of water. And the comments I'm hearing from our board remind me the exact same story. So when we're talking about we need economic development, we need academic development. But then we're looking at our lists of things that are supporting the infrastructure, the people, the facilities required to grow or maintain our town at a safe level. We're we're thinking we can cut those, yet our town could flourish. Yet those are the things that are required and needed to give us the environment to prosper. So if we don't have the facilities and and staff necessary to support or build or grow our town healthily, then that's not magically going to happen. If we're taking money away from safety investment, we're taking money away from amenities investment, people may not feel secure or love the town in which they live in to spend money here and to invest themselves in their own town. So as much as dollars in, dollars out means something, it also means to build an environment in which the town can prosper. So if we continue to cut, 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 push things down the road, push, 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 push. I mean, we're going to be in that same same place where we're going to be looking back decades then and be like, why didn't they start planning anything? Why didn't they put in the groundwork? Why didn't they start the infrastructure? Why didn't they do any of the plans to make our town successful now? And now we're struggling. Now we're declining. So we have to not kick that can down the road. We're doing the same thing and all the conversations I'm hearing are the same exact thing as the water situation we're in. So I'm hoping we can learn from past mistakes and not be the board that's pointed at in the future of, man, they really they paralyzed us by the decisions that they made and they hurt the town by not acting when they had the opportunity to. The other things I wanted to talk about is we have to invest in ourselves before others will invest in us. So if we're trying to seek and recruit businesses to come to our town, yet we're not investing in our own town, that's not going to be successful. I also want to note that, you know, four million dollars of grants alone for the one Cleveland construction project that we can look forward to and actively seeking more grants for that. And not only that, but we're also activating our strategic partners to maximize the returns of that as well. That is an amazing story, and that is a story of investment in our town. And that's a brand new main street that will serve to have our town prosper from now and forever in the future. So these are the kind of examples of those investments that we're participating in, that we can't just be blinded to every other scenario outside of that scope. The other thing I wanted to mention was that I just appreciate the layout, the accuracy, all the details included within our budget. I'm really looking forward to the feedback from the residents as we have not made any decisions or passed any budget. This one specifically that I'm hearing is which kind of conflicts with our community survey. So this one in particular is people stated that they feel safe in Wellington. That was like a very common response that we heard. So the question of whether or not expense for additional policing, right, is necessary when our community themselves are saying that they feel super safe here is my question. So that's kind of like the feedback I'm seeking from hearing from from the public as well. I think as we grow, we need to be proactively safer. And I I like that idea. But if that goes opposite of what the community is telling us through major community surveys, that's where I kind of want to question that one. So I'm looking forward to hearing what people say about that. I'm also curious about other investment opportunities. For example, the pickleballers, there there's no joke. We've heard from them several times. They are not just people who play sports. They are community. They're actively engaged. They're active. And they want to be participate in their in their communities all the time and have amazing bonds with other players and and everything. So this is an example, I think, where we could seek more investment, whether it's a pavilion for pickleballers. I I've done a lot of community outreach to understand the recreational ones of our community. Pickleball and of course pool were number one, number one, number one. But not just that, pickleballers showed up to volunteer at events that I was seeking information for. They are they are ready to activate. So I hope that we're hearing that loud and clear. I want that to be a major part of our parks master plan, but if we can move on that quicker, do something now to keep that that community engaged and involved in Wellington, I think that will pay back tenfold. Because they are activated and ready now. So those are those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mervin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Nick, for the presentation tonight, a really awesome budget presentation. I don't think I've, you know, in the past three years that we've seen one of these put together. I can't say I've seen something quite this comprehensive before, so thank you very much for this document. I I I think there's been a lot of potentially doom and gloom here tonight, so I just want to highlight a couple of things. Thank you for the twenty two twenty two audit update. Look forward to getting that done by the end of the year and obviously rolling into the twenty twenty three audit. What I think probably the most important thing folks need to understand here is that we are above and beyond reserve requirements in most of these funds. Obviously, the water and the sewer fund, looking down the road, those are those aside, the rest of the funds are all well over budget reserve requirements. And I want to point out that in especially in the general fund, you know, we while we can certainly look at cutting back on certain expenses like the the elevator in the admin building or or the public works admin building, I some of these things are I I don't necessarily know what the ADA requirements are behind the elevator in specific. I assume it is a requirement and it's going to have to be done at some point. So I want to be very clear, some of these things either A have to be done or B in terms of the public works administrative building. I I don't know if folks have been in the old Boys and Girls Club, but holy smokes, that thing is in dire need of remodel or repair or tear the sucker down and put a new one up, whatever that happens to be. You know, we've we've we're we've budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for that this year and another eight hundred eighty, I think, for the next year to get that done. These are very substandard amenities for our employees and, you know, staff is not asking us for any additional employees this year or anything like that. So effectively, what we're, as the town of Wellington has done for many years, asking them to do more with less. If the board wants to talk about moving the public works admin building down the road, that's that's fine. But we need to understand it's going to be done at some point. And with a six million dollar what what is projected to be a six million dollar end fund balance this year, what I want to highlight is A, we are trying attempting to thread the needle here with both the NPIC contract renegotiation, right? Because if if that comes back and those things look good, then we'll be, we won't have to continue to do the million dollar general fund transfer to the water fund going forward. I'd also like to highlight that the town of Wellington is not a for profit enterprise, right? So if if the suggestion is that ending fund balances should just continue to increase year over year over year, well, that's not exactly what these are tax dollars. And we should be using tax dollars to pay for the infrastructure needs of our community. If that means a public works admin building because our employees are in need of that, I'm all for that. The fact is, the the general fund balance is still well above reserve requirements. So again, we can kick capital improvement projects down the road. I would highly recommend we don't do that. Certainly, our automated metering infrastructure capital improvement project, that is not that is not a negotiable, right? So some of these things, you know, if we want to talk about maybe moving the Community Impact Deputy down the road, we can do that. I think Sergeant Cherry has made it very clear that, or I apologize, Lieutenant Cherry. I think he's made it very clear that this is kind of more of a want than it is a need at this time. And certainly, I'm all for public safety. I'm absolutely a hundred percent for that. But if it means saving us a little money for this year, I'm fine with moving that down. So you know, again, I to trustee Wigan's point, this is kind of a needs versus wants discussion. I think in the in the impact, the Community Impact Deputy, that might that might be a want. As far as the public works admin building on the elevator, those are going to be needs at some point, whether it's this year or next year. So we, you know, like I said, we're trying to thread the needle on this a little bit. I very much look forward to public comments as far as what what folks think we may or may not be able to cut. But, you know, this this is budgeting and it's a little bit of, you know, I don't want to say it's rocket science, but it's a, you know, this is the most important thing we do every year. So look forward to public comments.
Thank you. Thank you for the beautiful budget. Very in depth, easy to find things, easy to see what we're looking at. So I really appreciate that. I agree with all of you here in different areas. So that's nice. It's beautiful thing. When I look at this and I see the projects for the public works building and things of that nature, that's where I start talking about cost versus versus the benefit. So think about this, if you work in an area of cubicles where it's so hard to hear the person you're talking to on the phone because somebody just on the side of the cubicle is talking to somebody on the phone, how long is it taking you to do your job effectively and efficiently for the town? Are you happy doing that? Or, you know, all of all of those things come into play, especially with that building. So I would say that that is definitely in need. When we start kicking those things down the road, we're looking at inflation of costs of materials, everything of that nature to where that that project could double costing us more. So those are the things that that we need to pay attention to. And then we talk about, you know, maybe the striper as an example. Was it cost for us to pay to get all the striping done? What's the long term savings that we'll get from that? All of these things are 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 much larger discussion item than just a dollar amount in the line item. Look looking at the big picture of all of these and what we need. And and when we do need to invest in our own community so others will want to invest in it for economic growth, that was the biggest thing, number one thing we heard from Berthids, director that came down here, I don't remember his his exact title, but the economic developer, they they decided to make that leap of faith in investing in their community and they've they've grown leaps and bounds and created more sales tax revenue and things of that nature because of doing that. So where it sits, if if we could tighten up some places, sure. But I would be fine with it where it's at because I know we need to go forward and invest in our community to get where to where we want to be. And we do not need to recreate a scenario in which we're chasing our tail because something's happened and we didn't have the capacity to facilitate it. So that's that's where I'm at. Time for public comment. Those wish you to speak will be given three minutes. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Rose Francis. I'm nervous, so I apologize. But I wanted to touch on trustee Moyer's point about trust. I want to say I don't I don't want this to come across as rude or argumentative or anything like that. It's just my kind of view of trust. I've been in Wellington since two thousand and eighteen. So I have seen what we had and what we currently have. And allowing myself to kind of have that trust that, you know, yes, I trust you a hundred percent is hard because I've seen our past and I see our present. And it's hard to kind of give all of that trust. And it's hard to kind of give all of that trust. Being what our past was, um, and kind of where we are at now. Um, you know, and I think personally, you know, I haven't come to all the meetings. I'm trying to come to as many as I can now, um, to, you know, get to know you guys more. And I know that's a lot of the preconceived notions that a lot of people do have, um, coming to these things would help for a lot of those people, but I'm, I'm trying my best for that. But as far as giving that trust, it's gonna take time. Um, and being that I can't be here all the time. Um, it's, it might take a little bit longer, uh, than normal, but uh, yeah, I just wanted to to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. No more further public comment. Thank you, Mr. David.
Um, let's see, what time is it? What's first thing? All right. Yep. Okay.
Um, will the clerk please read the title for the items on the consent agenda?
October eighth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting minutes, resolution number fifty-two dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution of the town Wellington, Colorado, calling a special meeting.
Do I hear a motion? I move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee, or Mayor, Mayor Protem Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Uh, may we take a five-minute break? And then we'll come right back. All right. Will the clerk please read the title for item E one?
Public hearing, consideration of a preliminary plat for Wellington Business Center, amendment number one, a replat of lots seven and eight, Wellington Business Center.
Thank you, Dan. Do you have anything to comment on this? Before we begin?
I'd be happy to. Um, this matter is a quasi judicial matter and, uh, to remind the board of a presentation I gave, uh, I think it was in September at this point. Um, quasi judicial matters are, are an important but distinct part of the role of the board of trustees and other, other elected bodies. Um, here you're sitting as a judge, as in a trial. You make decisions based on evidence from the hearing using pre-existing standards. Um, to remind you back in that presentation, kind of divided the, the process into like three big chunks. One is the development of the record. That's the evidence. That includes the packet and includes everything you'll hear today as part of the, the public presentation, the presentation from staff and the applicants and questions you have. Following that, um, is deliberations where you'll apply the criteria and standards that are in our law um, to those facts which are, make up that record. Um, there, if you're unclear of the criteria, um, I just wanna remind you, you can always ask. You're not sure what the standards are that were being applied here, ask. Um, and finally, when you make a decision, you need to, uh, have a motion that points to those facts that indicates what in the record supported the conclusion. Um, and, and to take the action. So it's a unique process. You, y'all are doing a great job. Um, and I think Cody has always done a very good job in these meetings and in planning commission meetings, presenting the procedures. Um, so I think in your packet, he's got laid out the, the standard procedures for a public hearing. So, um, and now that trustee Daly is walking into the room, um, I won't mention, or I'll just briefly mention that we don't allow remote participation in quasi judicial matters. So if you have any questions about that, let me know. But otherwise, um, I think Cody's present this item.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Cody Byrd, the director of planning, uh, will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. Uh, I am Cody Byrd, uh, planning director. Um, you had a pretty lengthy conversation there and a pretty heavy one. Um, I'd like to add a little bit of levity uh, to the evening. Um, you guys are doing a great job. Um, I'd also, uh, like to thank, uh, one of our development partners, uh, Scoot Leary and Steve Wimp and their agent, Shane Ritchie, um, for bringing some economic development to our town, uh, for this particular proposal. Um, this, uh, is, as introduced, it is a preliminary plat. Um, it's two commercial lots on the south end of town in Wellington Business Center. Um, I'm gonna review our public hearing procedures, but I wanted to at least highlight what we're talking about. Um, the plat is, uh, uh, two lots existing, it'll remain two lots. Um, the procedures that we recommended for the applicant was a cleanup item. Some of the, the needs could have been accomplished through other, um, procedures administratively, uh, separate instruments like easement dedications and things like that. But what we really wanted to do was make sure we had a clean document at the end of the day. And that's why we're going through this preliminary plat hearing to vacate some easements in some areas, dedicate new easements for public infrastructure and clean everything up. So it's nice, neat and tidy package. Um, so that's what your public hearing on for tonight is on. I'd like to review those public hearing procedures from your packet. Um, I'll, in a moment, I'm gonna come back and ask if there's any, uh, conflicts of interest or ex parte communications. Ex parte communications being, uh, information received outside of the public hearing process. I'm going to give a more in-depth introduction on the site, the project and, um, the considerations for tonight. And I'll, I'll invite our, our applicants up to provide any additional project information that they would like to share. There'll be an opportunity for the board to ask any clarifying questions so that you have, uh, the information being presented is well understood. They're not deliberation questions, but clarifying, I heard you say this, what did that mean, types or procedural questions. Um, then the, the mayor will open up to a public hearing. That's a little, a lot of public comments. And following the close of any public comments, we'll close that hearing. Uh, the applicant, the developer will have an opportunity, uh, to make some closing statements if they feel the need to. Staff will also make closing remarks if there's a need. Um, and then that will conclude the record portion of the evening, as Mr. Sapienza um, pointed out earlier. Um, the board can then deliberate and at the end of your deliberations, you could make a recommendation, uh, or, uh, take an action via motion. Are there any questions on the procedures for a public hearing? Excellent. Then I'll circle back and invite, uh, the mayor and the board, if you've had any, um, any conflicts of interest regarding this particular application.
Can the board disclose if they've had any ex parte communication?
I can. I've actually had the opportunity to chit chat with, um, the developer in question. Um, mainly it's been here at our meetings and he shared information on future plans and items like that, but nothing that would compromise my ability to make a sound judgment in this case. Um, I was a sitting planning commissioner when we voted to rezone this land from light industrial to C three.
And then any conflicts of interest? Okay, thanks, sir.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, board. Um, so to dig into this a little bit, uh, deeper, uh, we've got some procedural matters taken care of. Um, as I alluded to, this is about, uh, a ten acre, uh, piece of property. Um, it is two existing platted lots in Wellington Business Center, uh, lot seven and lot eight. The existing surrounding, um, this area also consists of commercial multi-tenant, uh, projects. Um, they've been built out in phases. The proposal for this, um, uh, subject development, um, is also a phase development. The planning commission has already heard the site plan review for this application. The planning commission approved that site plan. Um, so that piece is not part of the board's considerations, but we did include some visuals for reference. Um, and there's some boards here that the applicant has brought as well, just to kind of help keep in, in mind what the overall project goals look like. The, uh, phase development, well, will consist of, uh, multiple, multiple multi-tenant buildings, mouthful. Um, but the commercial pattern kind of continuing, uh, from the north, uh, to the south there. Um, we did, planning staff did ask that they give some consideration to the building orientation on this project to help mitigate some of the potential adverse impacts from highway noise to the residents and views. Um, and so a lot of the lot configuration, uh, that you see on your preliminary plat, the easements that are proposed are directly in alignment with those recommendations for building orientation. Um, as I mentioned, there's, there's several other options that, that staff or the applicant could have pursued from administrative procedures to accomplish the same, but we really wanted to make sure that we got the lot cleaned up so that any one looking at this in the future would have a, a clear path to understand what the needs and obligations were. Um, in your staff packet, we outlined the, um, preliminary plat procedures. The planning commission has already heard this plat in a public hearing and recommended, they've adopted the findings in the staff report and recommended that, uh, the board of trustees consider approving this preliminary plat. The board will conduct its, um, preliminary plat hearing. And if it advances, um, the applicant will then be able to proceed to the final plat. The final plat process also goes back to the planning commission and will come back to the board for a final approval. Uh, when it comes back to the board for final approval, we'll typically include a development agreement with that approval process for, uh, a remer- memorandum of understanding for construction of public improvements. So public water lines, fire hydrants, uh, transportation considerations will be a part of that, uh, final approval. In your packet, we also outline the findings for approval, uh, from the land use code. Those are the factors that the board considers and are outlined in your staff report. The planning commission's recommendations are in your staff report for those findings. Um, in general, the findings you're looking for, uh, this is paraphrased, not word for word, but that the project, uh, proposed represents a functional development plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan in town codes that it adheres to the town's zoning districts and development standards, that there's adequate utility infrastructure, that transportation connectivity, including walkability is satisfied, um, that there's been mitigation measures for any potential adverse impacts of the development. Um, and that there is a, that the project is meeting the need or desirability uh, for the development and balances our land use type considerations. Um, so again, that's paraphrased and, and the details of those are, are further outlined in your staff report. Um, so I can highlight any one of those if needed, or if there's questions about the recommendations the planning commission forwarded in your packet. Otherwise, I would say, or reiterate that the planning commission did approve the site plan. They recommended approval of the preliminary plat to clean up lot lines and easements. Um, and they adopted the findings in your staff report. Staff also recommends approval of this preliminary plat and allow the applicant to proceed to the final plat. Um, we will be working with the applicant, um, managing that final plat process, um, if this is approved tonight. Um, and balancing their needs with their building and construction schedules for development of the site. So that's my, uh, brief introduction. Um, I'd like to invite, uh, Mr. Scoot Leary, if you wanted to share anything additional for your project.
Thank you, Dr. Byrd. I mean, staff's done an unbelievable job on this. It's been three years in the making. I just listened to an hour and a half of finance discussions. Sounds like we're, we're teed up for this at a perfect time in your budget. So, um, you know, if there's any questions on what's going on, it's a mixed use. Like you said, it's ten acres. Shane can tell you about where all the drainage goes, the photons of the lights or what the C dot count is on the cars or anything else that you're interested in the particulars of. But I think it's time to move some dirt and make some money.
Um, now it'll be time to open up for public comment. Oh, public hearing, time being, sorry, public hearing. Time being, let's see here, eight forty-two P M. Uh, Mr. Byrd, we please proceed with the presentation.
Do you have any questions? Happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions. I wanna say thank you for having the fourteen-foot sidewalks for ADA accessibility. That was a huge one. I know that we used to have a building over in this area and the sidewalks are extremely narrow and make it where wheelchairs cannot pass when someone is opening a door on the ones that are further north. So I love the fact that you have much larger accessibility areas. And I, the plat is laid out perfectly, so I'm grateful.
And those sidewalks are heated too, right? Well, that's a nice deal.
Awesome. Um, we'll hold deliberation still after the presentation is complete. Mr. Byrd, you have anything to follow up with?
Um, no, I, I don't have any closing comments regarding what was presented. Um, I would like to point out that, the, the phased development plan, we did review the traffic impact study. Um, there, there may be a turn lane on the frontage road necessary for phase two of the development. And that's something that we'll wanna write into the development agreement to make sure that we, if, if our current staff is not here at the time that phase two comes on, that there's adequate information there to go back and review that. But it was not a, uh, requirement for phase one for C dot standards on the frontage road. So I just wanted to highlight that, that'll, will be a component that we'll bring back for you with more information for the final plat.
Okay, thank you. Um, further questions, deliberation, trustee Wigan, I know you're rich and
I just got a question. Can you kind of give us a idea of the balance of the businesses that are gonna be in it? I know that one that looked like the back building had the garage doors all crossed.
So at this point, we're just gonna be talking about the, the replat here.
Everything looks good. I just was curious about seeing how that's gonna impact.
To, to be responsive to the question, trustee Wigan, um, the, the property is zone C three mixed-use commercial, which allows uh, restaurant, retail, office and service type uses. Um, so as long as, and, and that's defined the zoning code. Um, so if, a- any business that fits those descriptions, and there's a few others in there as well. Um, if it fits those descriptions, then those, uh, tenants would be allowed to locate in these units. Um, so anything allowed by C three, um, and it's not uncommon for, uh, especially for a development of this scale and magnitude to um, start with a couple of anchors and then look for additional tenants as they build out. So um, that's my understanding of how this, uh, this proposal is moving forward.
Thank you.
Trustee Moore? Thank you, trustee Daly.
In deliberation yet?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, regarding findings, uh, number one listed in the staff report, preliminary plat represents a functional system of land use and is consistent with the rationale and criteria set forth in this code and the comprehensive plan. Um, based on the findings here, there's four bullet points. I'd absolutely agree with all of them, including, uh, traffic and, uh, abiding by and following the comprehensive plan for the future of what the community is looking for from, in general, the town of Wellington. Regarding finding number two, um, the land use mix within the project conforms to the town zoning district map and furthers the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Um, what, we just, just discussed that and based off of all the plans and plat, looks like it supports all the needs of any kind of C three type uses for zoning. Um, there's also listed through their A through F of other supporting items within the staff report. After reviewing those, those I, I align with all of those and they seem, um, like they are definitely supportive uh, and very beneficial to Wellington based off of everything I'm hearing, um, here. Number three, the utility design is adequate at a capacity that promotes the town's character while strengthening the town's vitality. Uh, there are three bullet points there, um, including the build out of the infrastructure that would be supported through this project. Um, site plan, development plan. Uh, and it identifies locations for grease interceptors or anything like that. If there is anything needed for restaurants, for example. Uh, and the water lines, it mentions that as well and how that's cared for. Number four, the transportation design meets the intent of the comprehensive plan. Um, again, there's many bullet points here. After reviewing all those, those all align with and, and maybe with the additional items for traffic study and those, um, items that would be included in the development plan, I think all of those are supported. So I'll go through one through four, cause I'm sure there's somebody else who wants to go through a couple of those findings. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Teets, bring it back to you.
I don't have any deliberation. I'm very grateful that we have someone that's looking at bringing in space that is greatly needed in this community and we just spent an hour and a half talking about bringing in economic development. I don't have any deliberation.
Thank you. Trustee Cannon?
Nothing from me. Thank you.
Member Tim?
I'll just finish off where trustee Daly left off then. Uh, number five, negative impacts on adjacent land uses have been identified and satisfactory mitigated, uh, after review of those four bullet points. I believe that, uh, this property is, uh, going to be in compliance of those in, uh, this initial plat. Uh, number six, there is a need or desirability within the community for the applicant's development and the development will help achieve a balance of land use and or housing types within the town according to the town's goals. Obviously, these are not, uh, houses, this is Obviously, these are not houses, this is commercial development, but yes, as far as those four bullet points go, I would agree with those as well. So, I do agree with numbers one through six. As far as that goes, I believe this preliminary plat would be within compliance.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I believe that it's completely within compliance of one through six. At this time, I'll open up to public comment, members of the public wishing to speak. We'll be given three minutes. That's what's on, that's...
I don't want to step on your toes. You did open it up for public hearing, and there were no public hearing comments made at that time. Additional public comment is not required for this hearing.
Perfect, okay. So, having no other individuals wishing to speak for the public hearing, seeing none, I now close the public hearing on this item, time being 8:49 PM. Does the applicant have any closing comments? Okay. Town staff have any closing comments?
Sir, I think, and we, I believe we've kind of gone through those, and maybe we've gotten some of the notes out of order, but, and we heard the findings consideration. So, procedurally, if there's any further deliberations by the board would be where you're at currently, and if there's no further deliberations, the motion, I think, would be the part where we're at in the procedures.
Perfect. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I make a motion to adopt the planning, so we want planning commission's findings, correct?
That's what I was hearing. The planning commission's recommendations are what was in the staff report, and I heard and saw a lot of head nodding that that was the consideration.
So, I'd like to move to adopt the planning commission's findings for approval and approve the preliminary plat for Wellington Business Center Amendment Number One.
A second.
Let me get a roll call, please.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. We'll be working with the applicant to bring forward their final plat in the future.
Perfect. Thank you.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Yeah, get her down.
All right. Clerk, please read the title for item E2.
Ordinance Number Eight Dash Twenty Twenty Four, An Ordinance of the Regulation of Traffic Adopting by Reference the Twenty Twenty Four Edition of the Model Traffic Code for Colorado, Repealing All Ordinance in Conflict Therewith and Providing Penalties for Violation thereof.
Thank you. Mr. Dan Zappienza, the town attorney, will present on this item.
Mr. Mayor, in the, in your information you have here, it has some description, this is a public hearing and quasi-judicial matter. You can disregard those portions of it. It is a standard, at this stage, it is an ordinance, we'll have public comment as usual. This is adoption of the Twenty Twenty Four Model Traffic Code by reference, and the reason it's listed in some of the materials here is a public hearing, is whenever you adopt a ordinance by reference, it requires a certain amount of public notice be given. So, this is an item that I've brought before the board, and the board has discussed, I think, two or three times. I do apologize for the inclusion of all 200-some-odd pages in the packet yet again, but if the board adopts the ordinance at this time, it would have to include it in there for another couple of years when we adopt the model traffic code again. This is an update of the, from the model traffic code. I think the town currently has adopted the 2010 version of the model traffic code. We've discussed all of the changes that we thought were pertinent to this for 2024. This includes some of those exclusions that are in the town code at the moment, with the exception of one that trustee Cannon had brought up regarding transit buses. So, that's a modification here, because thinking that those might be in the town at some point. I think that's a transit, not just transit buses, I should say. Otherwise, there's a slight modification to our ordinance, just kind of renumbering some things. But primarily here, this adopts the model traffic code for 2024. Stand for any questions?
Thank you.
Any questions from the board on this item? Okay. Any comments from the public on this item? Going once, going twice, so no public comment. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to adopt ordinance number Zero Eight Twenty Twenty Four, An Ordinance for the Regulation of Traffic Adopting by Reference the Twenty Twenty Four Edition of the Model Traffic Code for Colorado, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict Therein and Providing Penalties for Violations thereof.
A second.
Let me get a roll call, please.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
All right. Will the clerk please read the title for item E3?
Ordinance Number Nine Dash Twenty Twenty Four, An Ordinance Adjusting the Town of Wellington Marijuana Sales Tax.
Mr. Nick Redavid will present this item. Finance Director and Treasurer, sorry, didn't want to...
Good evening again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board. In the 2021 general election, Town of Wellington residents approved an ordinance allowing recreational sales of marijuana in town limits and a special marijuana tax. That current marijuana special sales tax is at 3.5%. The tax is levied in addition to the town's standard sales tax of 3%, the county sales tax of 0.8%, and the state sales tax of 2.9%, as well as the state marijuana sales tax of 15%. The ballot measure also authorized the Board of Trustees to increase the marijuana sales tax to a maximum of 5% through the adoption of an ordinance. Section Two Dash Fifteen Dash Forty of the Wellington Municipal Code outlines that the purpose of the retail marijuana sales tax is to generate revenue for the construction of a new community or recreation center and/or for general operating expenses as determined by the town on an annual basis. Prior to the opening of the first licensed dispensary, discussions with the Finance Committee and the Board of Trustees regarding the intended use of these funds took place, and at that time, staff expressed uncertainty as to whether reliable revenue estimates could be provided. As a result, it was recommended that during the initial years of taxes collection, the revenue be allocated to the general fund for general operating expenses. This approach allows the town to track revenue generated and gain a better understanding of the taxes' financial impact. Currently, these revenues have been included in the fund balance of the general fund. So, that includes 24 in what you saw for 2025 earlier tonight. To maintain the confidentiality of the single contributing business, the town has refrained from publicly disclosing the specific revenue generated from the marijuana special sales tax. Releasing such figures could reveal sensitive financial information about the individual business. For comparison purposes, a report from the Colorado Municipal League Regarding Marijuana Sales Tax Across the State was provided in your packet, and some nearby municipalities that have implemented the following rates. Berthet is at 7%, Boulder is at 3.5%, plus a 5% excise tax, and Fort Collins is at 0%. Ordinance Nine Dash Twenty Twenty Four proposes to increase the town's retail marijuana special sales tax from 3.5% to the maximum 5%.
Thank you. Any comments from the board on this item? All right. Any comments from the public? Do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance Number Nine Dash Twenty Twenty Four, An Ordinance Adjusting the Town of Wellington Marijuana Sales Tax.
A second.
Clerk, make a roll call, please.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have item E4. Clerk, will you please read the title for that?
Resolution Number Fifty Three Dash Twenty Twenty Four, A Resolution of the Town Wellington Authorizing Application for Water Smart Grant Funding Through the Bureau of Reclamation.
And you'll also be presenting?
Yes.
You can stay right there.
Thank you. There's a lot of movement. Good evening, Mayor and trustees. For you tonight is a request that staff works on a grant application, and there's been a lot of talk tonight about how do we inform residents about water conservation, and how do we support them through that process? And we are so quick that we already had that planned for tonight, and so one of those items is, so, are working on a grant for automated metering, or advanced metering infrastructure. So, that's a smart meter, and so that would help residents. There'd be access to better software once this entirely rolls out, that we could detect leaks, you could see real-time data, and so we are about 75% through that process right now of converting those, but we need the final push to get us there, and we are seeking grant funding, because we know that we have limited dollars right now, and we're trying to look at every single avenue that we have for funding, and that's something that the Board of Trustees is a pillar and a principle that staff takes to heart. So, with that, we would like to complete this project. We're seeking nearly about a million dollars from the Bureau of Reclamation, and that requires a 50% match. That match is included in your 2025 budget. The application period, it is due November 13th, is when the application closes, and then we will find out in May 2025 if we have received that. So, we did try to look if there was an option to get going sooner, rather than like waiting for the grant to go, but there is some environmental clearance that would be required, and so they did say it is best to wait until that May date, because it is a federal grant, and so we want to make sure that, should we've received those dollars, that we are doing it by the book, and as we would normally do. So, that is the request to be able to submit an application. Is there any questions?
No questions. Any comments from the public on this item? No. May I get a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number Fifty Three Dash Twenty Twenty Four, Resolution of the Wellington Board of Trustees Authorizing an Application for Water Smart Grant Funding Through the Bureau of Reclamation.
Second.
Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Can we have discussion really quick before we...
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. I just want to point out, because I know this will possibly come up later on, spending an additional income amount, but this is something that us as trustees have specifically asked Public Works to get figured out for our community. I know that there is residents in town that their bill has remained at like $80, and no one can identify what's going on, because these meters aren't AMI meters, so it's harder to track where some of that funding is going to. This also, I want to seek clarification, also sets us up for a possibility to have ability to monitor their own water usage eventually with the correct software on the AMIs. Yes, got it. So, and that was one thing that residents have stressed to us, and I've heard comments sitting here at this board, that residents want to be able to track their usage in real time, and this would be something that gets us a step towards implementing them being able to track their own water usage. It helps, it'll help conserve money related to individual residents, but I think it would be just a huge benefit in general for people to be able to realize how much water they actually are utilizing. So, this gets us one step closer to seeing that come to fruition, so I'm extremely grateful that we saw this come before us.
And I'd also like to note that staff has done an incredible job reaching out to residents. It's been a very difficult summer season, and I'd like to confirm that we have worked with every single resident. I've not heard a comment about someone's bill staying at a consistent rate, but maybe I'm not up to speed about every single comment's resident, and I respect that information that you're bringing forth, and I would encourage you all that if you're hearing something along those lines, please do reach out to us. We have an absolutely amazing staff that will meet with you one-on-one, and so there, I just wanted to confirm that, that that might be some different information that I've heard.
I did forward that email.
Clerk, make a roll call, please.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Any reports from the town attorney, Mr. Dan Zappienza?
No reports at this time.
Thank you. Any board reports? Trustee Moyer?
I'm very excited to share that Safe Routes to School, along in partnership with the Town of Wellington, big shout-out to Cody Agan and Billy, have officially closed our grant, and that is done. So, that's exciting, and we'll just continue to look forward to the future. Also, last week, we attended the regional elected official meeting, and Mayor Pro Tim gave a fantastic update. It was very encouraging. There's been a lot of, as he said, gloom and doom this evening, but Wellington really has a lot of momentum right now, and when you look at what's going on in other municipalities, we have exciting things happening, and our future looks really bright. So, I just want to remind everybody of that, and that's something we should be proud of. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Teetz?
No reports.
Thank you. Trustee Wiegand? Trustee Cannon? No report. Thank you.
Trustee Daly?
Homecoming week, so football game on Friday night, please come out. The other thing is a couple updates from both Prost and Main Streets. Main Streets is taking a look at their budget and plans for grant funding for next year, and reconsidering some items to make recommendations to align with their work plan. So, we could probably look forward to that. They have a work session coming up in the next couple of weeks. So, very good news from that side, and always fantastic work. The biggest thing that they have coming up that is my favorite is trick-or-treat on Main Street, so I hope that everybody can come out on Halloween. I heard over 60 businesses are participating in this event this year, meaning that you probably don't even have to go trick-or-treating after that, you'll get plenty of candy there. It's my favorite thing ever. It's like a parade of everybody from town. Thousands of people come, shut down Main Street, and it is Wellington. In just a few hours, you get to experience all the magic of Wellington, so it is going to be super fun. I really hope everybody can make it out there. Prost is going along very, very strong, checking in on individual parks. Great news is we've received all the equipment for the Frisbee Golf, or the multiple, now multi-option golf, all that equipment. Also, other equipment that's arriving is the ADA accessible dock, so that's going to be assembled in the near future. Prost is planning on hosting a small ribbon cutting or just dedication of the dock to some people who've been working on it for years and years and years, even previous Prost members who had had this vision, and it's finally coming to fruition. So, as soon as we know the details on that, I'll make sure everybody's invited, and I really hope you can attend. There may even be like a first cast thrown, or some kind of memorable event that occurs, and then probably something bigger in the spring, likely with the fishing derby. So, exciting news, things are happening, dog parks also on the schedule now at this point. So, Prost is getting work done, and it's lovely to see, and there's just such amazing active participants in our town, just bringing community needs and wants to the forefront, and making sure that those are heard and seeing these projects through. So, they have been working on a lot of these things, I'm not kidding, years and years and years, and a bunch of them are coming together right now, and it's just a beautiful thing to witness and to watch these volunteers at work. So, great news all around from my committees, my advisory boards.
Thank you. Member Tim?
Just real quick update, the town graciously accepted from the Chamber of Commerce the Above and Beyond Award at their annual dinner last week. A couple of members of the board were present. Hopefully, trustee Daly was able to deliver the plaque to the municipal services building, but so look forward to seeing that put up in the MSB at some point, and thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for that award.
Awesome, thank you. I did skip the deputy town administrator. Did you have any reports?
No, thanks.
I apologize. You know, I have reports other than it's, I like working with you guys, same thing. It's nice. It's, we work well together. We may not agree on everything, but we come to good compromise, and I think we work through things well, and it's nice to have a board that, everybody's got the town in your hearts, and everybody's doing their best to do what we can for the town, for our residents, and it's nice to have that. So, thank you, guys. Thank you, town staff, for being so incredible. Having no further business, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will now adjourn the regular meeting, time being 9:08 PM.